I'm 10B, receive report to provide comment on the housing opportunity sites, programs and implementation actions for the draft housing element 2014 to 2022, and authorize staff to submit to the California Department of Housing and Community Development.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The purpose of this item tonight is to review the draft housing element for 2014 to 2022, and receive comments from the city council. As you know, we've been working on the housing element update for a number of months, and we have produced, or we have been specifically working on recently, the housing element programs and also the inventory of available housing sites. As you know, state law requires that the housing element be updated every five years, and it's, and I'd also like to point out that it's staff's intent to treat this, this item somewhat like a study session, and we welcome any comments or questions during the presentation, so feel free to interrupt if you, if you have any, any questions or comments. The housing element provides a tool to promote housing development to meet the housing needs of people of all incomes, and the staff report focuses on two areas, really the meat of, of the housing element, and these two components are the inventory of available housing sites with capacity to meet the regional housing needs allocation, which we've gone over many times before, and that's the, the city's obligation over the next eight years for the, for housing units that we need to provide sites for. And secondly, to review programs to facilitate meeting that RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation requirement, and especially with regard to affordable units. First, I'd like to review what, what we've done, or what, what the city has done over the, the last housing element cycle, which is, we're just ending right now. That was from 2007 to 2014. And our RENA, or Regional Housing Needs Allocation, for that period was 973 total units, and as you can see, there's also a breakdown by affordability levels, 222 low, very low income, 160 low income, 188 moderate, and 403 above moderate. And we showed in our last housing element that we had sites to accommodate housing units at those income levels. But what actually happened was 772 units were produced, which is a lot of units, and there were not so many very low and low units. In fact, there were no very low units, and, and just a few low income units. The rest were split between moderate and above moderate, mostly at the crossing, the SNK project at the crossing, Pacific Bay vistas, Merrimont, and, and Skycrest. So those were, those were all in the higher ranges. And, and it was also a time when we lost redevelopment and other tools to, to promote affordable housing. So that, that was the result of, of the last housing element. Our new RENA obligation, which has been adopted, is for a total of 1,155 units, and those are split, again, between amongst very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. As you can see, there's 358 very low, 161 low, 205 moderate, and 431 above moderate. So the city needs to show that it has sufficient sites to accommodate these units. And in the, the table that is in your staff report that shows a, a listing of the housing opportunity sites, basically I'll break it down into two, two categories. And the first category are sites that are already zoned residential, sites where you could, you could build housing today, you could apply, you could submit an application, build housing now, and that would accommodate about 738 units. And for the most part, these are carryover from what was included in the last housing element. That leaves us short of the 1,155. So staff looked at available sites, and basically what has been contemplated in both the general plan and the transit corridors plan, and we identified 974, or sites that would accommodate 974 units. And those, those sites need to be rezoned in order to, to, to meet that, that RENA requirement. And that rezoning would, would actually be, make the zoning consistent with our adopted general plan and transit corridors plan. So it's not really anything new. We're not looking at any, any new sites which the city hasn't, hasn't considered previously for housing. And this map just shows the sites that are already zoned for housing and those that need rezoning. And it's, it's just to, to point out that the majority of, of sites that need rezoning are in the, in the transit quarters plan area or, or around there. So they're in areas that are now zoned, generally zoned commercial, and the rezoning would allow mixed use.
To the Chair, that's just what I wanted to check, is that we're talking about single family neighborhoods staying the same and focusing on the increase on the commercial corridors. Is that correct?
That's correct. These sites are, they're either in commercial corridors, or they are vacant school sites where housing would be allowed, if, you know, was decided to reuse those sites as, as housing. And for example, we recently had a interest from Skyline College for teacher housing and single family housing in the Skyline College area on, on the Skyline College property. But yes, this does not touch single family neighborhoods. All right, well, so since we identified the, the housing sites, in addition to having housing sites, you need to have, you need to be sure that, that those sites will actually, are actually available to accommodate the housing, and not just the total amount of housing, but also the housing for special needs groups, very, very low, low, moderate, even extremely low income households. So that's really, the purpose of the programs is largely to put programs, policies, implementation actions in place to encourage development of housing to meet the needs of all income groups and people from all parts of, of the So most of these programs are ongoing. They're, the, the majority, there are 52 programs in the previous housing element, and there were a few that were eliminated. They were eliminated because they generally had, were focused on redevelopment, like the redevelopment 15% requirement and so forth, which is, is now gone. So those programs were removed. And many, many of those other programs are carried forward unchanged. However, there is an ongoing process of evaluating housing element programs, which we do through our annual progress report, which we submit to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, and we present, we provide that to you every year. So there's really an ongoing sort of evaluation and of what's working, what isn't working. And then at the, at the end of the, the housing element cycle, which is where we are now, there's a, there's actually an exercise in which you go through a similar evaluation that you do on an annual basis, but you specifically look at it in terms of what, what works, what doesn't work, what needs to be changed, you know, what should stay the same, what should be eliminated. And so staff has gone through that exercise, and basically, the, the feedback that we've gotten is through, we've had meetings with the planning commission, we've had meetings with you, with the city council, we've worked with the, the countywide regional housing element update group, which is 21 elements, we've met with housing organizations, affordable housing developers, social service advocate, not advocates, but social services, service organizations. And staff has reviewed the, reviewed programs and suggested some changes. And that's what I, what I want to focus on in going over the program. So there's, there's basically eight programs that are changing, or we're suggesting should change, and two new programs. So I will first, I'll start with the, the goals, the, the housing, the each, all of the programs are under specific goals that are required by, by state law. So there, there are essentially six goals of the housing element, and as you'll see, most of them have to do with providing housing for lower income and special needs groups. So the first is to protect neighborhoods through conservation, rehabilitation, and improvement of existing housing. The second is to accommodate the, the regional housing needs allocation. The third is to expand construction financing techniques to achieve affordable housing. Fourth is to achieve energy and environmental conservation in residential design while maintaining affordability of housing. The fifth is to ensure continued availability of affordable housing for very low, low and modern income households. And the sixth is to support the needs of people with extremely low incomes. So that's, those are sort of the, the headings for all of the programs. And this slide shows the, just the titles of the, the eight programs that staff is suggesting to update or change. And the first one is, is support infrastructure upgrades. Who can, who can object to that? But this really, what this has to do is the transit corridors plan and implementation of the transit corridors plan. So what, the additional piece is to formulate a development impact fee to finance the upgrade and maintenance of infrastructure related to new residential and commercial development in the transit corridors plan area. So that's, that is the, that's the first proposed change. I'd ask if you have any, any thoughts or comment on, on that, that item. The, the second is to facilitate legalization of second units. I think that you're aware that, that excess housekeeping units are units that were in place from, before 1977, and there's a process to legalize those units. There is also a, a second unit ordinance, which allows new second units and units starting basically in 2003 to be approved through the, the normal planning process. That leaves a gap between 1977 and 2003, which is 20, 26 year gap, where there's basically no avenue for a household or homeowner to, to legalize a unit that was installed during that period. And so what this program does is it basically is a, set up a process to consider how we might create a legal process to, to legitimize some of those units.
How to legalize the illegal units?
Well, I mean, is an excess housekeeping unit illegal? That's, you know, that, that's a question, and there are, there are also amnesty programs. And, you know, you would have to develop criteria for, you know, what the city would be willing to, to accept. For example, with excess housekeeping units, the units have to be, have been shown, proved to have been built at a certain time, and also meet the building codes at the time that they were built.
I think it's, it's a real sensitive subject, you know, nimbyism and things, but it's my understanding that, you know, the problem with the second unit ordinances is parking. You know, it's, parking's bad enough, and then now if you're legalizing, you know, additional living units, it just exacerbates the problem. So that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a tough one.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. That's, that's, it's a, it's a very thorny issue. David, you have a thought on that?
I think in general, as you look at these proposed programs, it's important to realize that the idea is the programs would come forward for further research, discussion, and consideration by the city. So at this point in time, this is an idea, a concept for future consideration in terms of trying to provide more affordable housing units. Would we want to, to look at, consider the possible legalization of these second units? So you're not making a decision on the topic at this time, only to consider at a future date, this, this sort of opportunity for additional affordable units here in San Bruno.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm, I'd like to interrupt you here because, I mean, I, I read through this, and I'm sure 99% of us don't understand a lot of the, the purpose of a housing element. And the more and more I try to understand it, it is, it's mandated, but it's, it's full of goals. And you showed us what our last seven years produced, what this, we set a goal, and we didn't reach any of it. I mean, we exceeded where we knew, you know, where I'm sure everyone exceeds, but when you, you know, when you set a goal for very low income housing, and you don't produce any, you know, what, you know, what's the accountability here?
Yeah.
And so now you're saying that, you know, we have these programs and things that, are we just trying to show the state that we can implement this, but we're not really gonna implement it? Or we're really not, you know, we're, we're really not intending to get, you know, to gain housing with these programs? Because, you know, seven, eight years from now, what happens when we come up short? I mean, you're showing 178 very low income, a goal of 178 very low income. That's, I mean, based on our track record, ain't gonna happen. So I'm just trying to get a feel for what are we actually trying to achieve, or are we just trying to pacify the state, you know, with a, you know, with a, you know, detailed goal and, you know, and, and housing element?
Councilmember Abara, the, the objective here is to put in place programs that could generate housing units to meet the various goals. So the idea really is, as we look at these proposed programs, for example, this one here, it is a, an area of, of discussion in terms of legalizing second units that were put in place in the past, but it could be an opportunity where we could achieve some low or very low income units. As you pointed out, during this current cycle, we produced very little, almost, almost no very low or extremely low units, extremely low number of those units. So we need to look at programs where we could potentially achieve these goals. This may be one. There are some communities where they are looking at legalizing, but they're also doing it in a way where they're looking at what are the community concerns, how can we address those community concerns or neighborhood concerns, and at the same time, find middle ground to create more affordable housing units in our neighborhoods. So our objective is to, is to try to find real programs that could be implemented here in San Bruno to provide housing for all economic segments, including the extremely low and low income segments. That's our objective.
To the Chair.
I read.
Let me see if I can say this correctly. There are illegal second unit dwellings out there that are occupied, and they already have, they already create the parking problems. It's not, it's not that we are going to say, let's see. These things already exist. We just can't count them because they're not legal, and we don't know about them. So we can't count them toward our housing units. I mean, that's part of the problem. They're there. They cause parking problems. We all know about somebody who has, you know, lives in a garage someplace, or lives in the, in the illegal housing, you know, in-law unit or something like that, especially if it was built between 1977 and 2003. I mean, they're there, but we can't count them. So that's part of the solution to this. We're not creating new units that were already built in these years. And the second piece is, there are units that are illegal that aren't being used, so then we have to look at that. And then third, new units that could be built. So it's, we're, we need to kind of be clear on how we're attacking this problem. So I'm glad you said that this is, these are possibilities that we're gonna come back and look at them, but that's, that's what we're doing. So thank you.
To the Chair. Going back to Councilman Iber, I mean, it is opening the door, because you're bringing it up for discussion and consideration. There are parking impacts to neighborhoods. Yes, they may exist, but it doesn't, you know, I guess you go back as you're trying, you're trying to achieve a, a number. I think that's great, but in the bigger good of it, is that the right course? Is that the way we're going to achieve our goal? And is it a realistic goal? And if that doesn't pan out, what is our alternative? What's our backup plan? So, so to me, I understand putting things on the table and trying to see what you could put in a toolbox. Nothing wrong with that. But at the same time, there's a lot of other facets that actually apply to this, and I think it does open the door to a lot of other, other things that have been discussed a little bit up here.
Yeah, I think, I think another way to look at it is, you know, previously in the last housing, when we had redevelopment and before the, the Palmer Court, Court decision, we had tools to create or to require affordable housing, and we did. I mean, in the, the previous achievements were, were really great because we, we exceed, not only exceeded the total number, but we exceeded the affordability numbers. Unfortunately, that was not, not possible. And I, I think also that the state's intent is not to force communities to create, you know, 360 very low income units and 180 low. It is to make sure that you zone to have the capacity to do it. And some of the criteria for determining what could be affordable is, you know, rightly or wrongly, is, is density, for instance. There's the assumption that if, if you have a higher density site, that you're more likely to, to be able to provide affordable housing on that site than if you have a single family site. So these are the, the types of, sort of the guidance that, that the state is, is giving, but they're not, I mean, it would be impossible. It's the private sector that, that, you know, comes forward with projects and builds housing. I mean, I feel like it's our, our role to, to try to guide it and to put policies and measures in place.
No, and I, and I agree with that. And I, I'm not attacking the whole problem, and it's, it's unusual that you set goals over an eight-year period, seven, eight-year period, and if you don't achieve it, oh, well. You know, then you renew it, and you're, you know, you're compounding things by throwing out numbers that, you know, you weren't able to achieve before. I like all the programs. I mean, I know the second units is, you know, is very touchy subject in a bedroom community like this, but I mean, I also am in favor of the transit quarters plan where we're going to create new opportunities for housing. So that, and the possibility of condo conversions and also, you know, other sites that were, you know, formerly schools, whatever. But that's another controversy in itself.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
And again, as Vice, Vice Mayor Medina indicated, we're looking at a broad range of programs. I think there are about 50 or so programs in the overall implementation program that's before you this evening. So it's, it's a broad-based tool, tool belt.
So the, the, I think the next, next program is probably less controversial, and it's just, it's just updating, updating the, the zoning code so that we, you know, have the, the number of, of housing sites that we need to meet the, meet the RENA. So that's program two A, and the fourth one, implementation of the transit quarters plan. And that, that is a, a program that's, that is intended to make sure that as the, as the transit quarters plan moves forward, that things are, are planned properly. For example, we talked, previously talked about the, the impact fee. But just, what is the implementation program? What are the, what is the sequence of actions? There's actually an action, an implementation program within the transit quarters plan, which is quite lengthy, but it has to be carried out. So the thought was that we would, working with the council and a, an advisory group of possibly of department heads or, you know, staff, start to map out just what needs to be done to make sure that the, the transit quarters plan unfolds in a, you know, in a rational manner. And the, the next item is, you know, it's, it's very similar, similar. We adopted the, the residential design guidelines, you know, back in, I think it was 2009. And now with the transit quarters plan, we have design guidelines for El Camino and San Bruno and, and the downtown. So this is really, you know, another implementation measure to ma, to make sure that all projects meet the design guidelines of, of the transit quarters And the next program is regarding affordable housing strategies, and that program is, as you know, we have, we, we have a considerable amount of money in the Low Market Rate Housing in Lufi Fund, which is sort of waiting for a project. And so this program is really to decide how to prioritize that money and how to plan for what type of project that would produce affordable housing. You know, would just, you know, how, how would that take place? Would it be, you know, an RFP to affordable housing developers? Would it, it would, it would just be working out how we would go about Condominium conversions, that's another fairly controversial issue, I think, because what that really is, is suggesting is when a, a rental project converts to for sale condominiums, is to treat it like new, new for sale housing, and making it subject to our below market rate housing program, which requires 15% of the units be affordable to low and moderate income households.
Have you picked out any, I mean, have you searched out any potential, you know, projects for that? Because condo, condo conversions would be existing rental units, right? Multi-residential rental units. Do we have an idea of how many might be? Do we have an idea of how many might be, you know, potential candidates?
you know, a number, I mean, often when a, when a developer builds a, a rental project, there often an, an exit strategy is, is conversion to condo. So, and, you know, we have a lot, we have more of those projects now at the crossing, and, and we'll probably have more. So, you know, I, I had not identified any particular project, but that, I could, that could happen in the, in, you know.
You know, if I could, on that, what we find in some cases is that with a new project to circumvent our, our inclusionary requirement, a developer will propose a rental project instead of a for-sale project, but they'll go ahead and map it. They'll record a condominium map on it. So this may be an opportunity that when they go forward and actually use that property as a condominium, there would be an opportunity for the city at that time to trigger the affordable requirement, whether it's in, in Lufi or inclusionary units.
So, now I'll, I'll move on to the, to the, oh, did I, I missed the emergency shelter, sorry. Emergency shelter zoning, and that's something we all know about. It's something that we're working on, and we hope to be working with you on this, identifying, reviewing the, the location for emergency shelter in the next month or so. And so, this program actually could sort of go away if, if we, if we get it done before the housing element is, is adopted. Then there are two, two new programs, and the first one is an Affordable Housing Impact Fee. And that, that program is a, an impact fee that would be imposed on new housing development. And the, the, the logic behind it is that the creation of, of market-rate housing creates a need for affordable housing. Because as you, as you build market-rate housing, more services and so forth are required by the residents of, of the new housing. And the City of San Bruno currently is participating in a countywide nexus study, which is studying that nexus between the building of market-rate housing and the need for affordable housing. And that study is being, it's being done county-wide, but it's also being tailored to each community. So the, the comparables and the, the sort of background material and so forth are, are custom, customized for, for each community. And included in that study is what's called a commercial linkage fee. And the commercial linkage fee is, is a fee on new office development that would be used for affordable housing. And the logic there is that, you know, creating new office development also creates a need for affordable housing. And so, what will happen in, in this, this study is that a range of what would be reasonable fees will be presented, and we will bring them to you to, you know, to review. And often, communities choose a range. I mean, often they won't go to the, the max, they'll go somewhere, you know, for various reasons, you know, a, a lower than, than the maximum fee. But in any case, we're, that, that Affordable Housing Impact Fee is being worked on right now. And then the, the next program, which is the Affordable Housing Strategies, and I apologize because in your staff report, it mentions the, the Affordable Housing Impact Fee and the Commercial Linkage Fee within this Affordable Housing Strategies program. So I can see how you'd be confused or think that, that, you know, there's no difference between the two, but there actually is. And so the, this program is really to explore a range of housing programs that are considered by the, the housing community to be best practices for producing affordable housing. So rather than create a, you know, a new program for each one, this would be an opportunity to, perhaps in study sessions, to review and discuss possible other affordable housing programs. And these include such things as rent stabilization, another very controversial topic, Just Cause Eviction for rental projects, and partnering with, with employers to fund and assist in facilitating affordable housing, and also potentially looking at a voluntary set aside of 20% from the, the redevelopment boomerang funds. So that's really looking at a, a range of different, different options, and considering pursuing them further. And, could you go to the next one? Yeah. So, in terms of, you know, what, what we have to do, what's discretionary, what's discretionary, what's not discretionary, really, rezoning is not really, we, we have to do that, not only because of this, but for a number of other reasons. And so that, that's the one that, that is required. And the other programs are essentially discretionary. However, in reviewing the, the housing element, HCD needs to see that the city is committed, is committed, and, you know, demonstrates that it's promoting affordable housing for all income levels and all in, income groups. So, so to the extent we can demonstrate that, I think that helps us with our case to, for an approved and certified housing element. And then finally, for, for next steps, our plan is to complete the draft housing element, including city council comments today, and to submit the draft housing element to HCD for an initial review in October, November. And we would submit the draft housing element with HCD comments back to you and to the, the Planning Commission for consideration of approval in December or January. And our objective is to submit it back to, to HCD for certification by the end of January. That concludes my presentation.
If I could just ask, you know, a simple question on the allocation. It's all a formula to come up with those numbers?
The, the regional housing needs allocation?
Yeah.
It, it is a formula.
Because I'm bringing, I'm bringing back to, you know, this somewhat, you know, lofty goal of extremely low and very low, you know, units, you know, in the next eight years.
It is a formula, however, there's a, there's a little bit of difference in, in San Mateo County, because with CCAG and 21 Elements, the, all of the cities in the county and the county itself got together to determine our own RENA distribution. We got the, you know, the big number for the county from, from ABAG, and then it was distributed locally. And, and I have to say that it's very similar to what we would have gotten from ABAG, but there are, were adjustments that could be made based on local conditions.
I think what you're doing is difficult. I was involved with the very first RENA action through CCAG, and it's not easy. There's what we want to do, what we should do, what developers will do, what the market will bear, et cetera, and the state is telling us what we have to do. So, none of this is easy, there's a lot of controversy, and I think you've done a good job to start out and outline what we need to look at. And I don't have any specific, particular questions beyond that.
Okay. Just, just comments, Connie, neat comments.
This evening, we're just looking for your comments, and we received just a few from you. If you have any additional comments, we, we welcome them, and we would take your comments and incorporate them into the draft we're, we're going to submit to HCD, and we anticipate doing that, as Mark said, later on this month or early November, and this will come back to you.
Mark, if, if I could, I'll comment. I'll comment on this housing impact fee. You're talking about, who, who is that gonna come from? If you're gonna start, I mean, I can understand the impact fees for new commercial development, but is that something we, we adopt by ordinance and then, you know, implement? And how are the other communities doing it? And so, what we, what I don't want is, you know, is to put a roadblock in developing in our community, you know, where, you know, don't go to San Bruno, they got impact fees.
Yeah, I, yes, we would, we would have to adopt it, and I, and I think the, the purpose of it, and the reason that communities are doing it in the first place, is because of the, the Palmer decision, which basically, you know, invalidates one-half of our below-market-rate housing fee, fee and program. So, the, the, the inclusionary BMR program does not apply to rental housing now. So this would, this would essentially replace that for, for rental housing.